Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Alariah. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorangecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the November 25th Board of Commissioners Meeting. Mr. Kallo has our little dog from the kennel.
Our featured dog this week is a five-year-old hound mix. Found near Spruce Street in Alariah. Not available for adoption until December 2nd because of the holiday and opening and closing at the kennel. Got a great personality. And we have thirty-three dogs now, so please, if you get a chance, stop down, bring yourself a new dog home.
We do have a proclamation, but I do not see...
She's not here yet. We'll wait. She comes in and we'll give it to her.
So I guess we'll do the first budget hearing of the coroner? Dr. Evans?
Basically, my budget is the same as last year except for some increase in the salary because we need to reinstitute. We, for as long as I remember, we had a coroner investigator. We lost that around 2005, 2006. We haven't had one since then, so for the last ten years, we've been without a coroner investigator. That's an individual that, you know, helps the coroners at the scene, usually a law enforcement type officer that interacts between the legal system, the police department, and the coroner's office, helps the coroner investigate deaths and investigate criminal activity, you know, they're involved with deaths, kind of thing. They're also kind of a jack-of-all-trades. You know, there are times where the coroner, like, in the middle of the night, you're in places that are a little difficult to be in by yourself, and so it's good to have investigators, especially someone with police training with you. There are areas like our morgue that's in Lorraine on Reed Avenue is a difficult place to be by yourself at two o'clock in the morning. And so that person, in days gone by, was always with the coroner with investigations. In 2005 or 2006, we lost that position, and I wasn't coroner at that point, so I'm not sure why we lost it. Maybe, it may have been a budgetary kind of thing. The second thing is because our department, since I took over in 2011, our number of cases has skyrocketed. Most of that's due to the opiate epidemic that we've been facing. It's not just a Lorraine County problem. I mean, the entire state of Ohio, the entire United States is in the throes of this terrible opiate epidemic, and we have a lot of young people dying, so our numbers have gone way up. Because of that, you know, we need, I only have one, I have an office manager, and that's my only office worker. So I do need someone to help her out with all of the things that we do with this. Also, if she's not available, I need somebody to be in the office. I can't, I have to have my office open Monday through Friday. I mean, the problem with the coroner's office is we are a seven-day, twenty-four-hour day, seven-day-a-week job. I mean, it's not like, we don't ever, you know, have a day off. You can't say, "Well, I'm taking Thanksgiving off." You know, we're working every day because of the, because that's the nature of the business. But at any rate, to make a long story short, everything on the lines is all the same as last year. In spite of the fact that, you know, our volume has been up, we have been able to maintain by making some cuts, you know, we've negotiated better things with our drug costs and things of that nature for our drug tests. We've negotiated things to keep everything else in line. So everything else stays the same, but there are two things that I do need to add. I do need to add a coroner investigator, and I do need to add some part-time secretarial help.
Doc, everything, I mean, I understand the needs out there, but even non-direct services, probably don't professional services, that's a, just the increase in our cost heading for the autopsies in Cuyahoga, is that what the...
We don't, we don't really, we don't really do any Cuyahoga County. I don't send, since I've been coroner, I personally have not sent any person to Cuyahoga County. Now, unfortunately...
Yeah, it happens anyway, though.
Unfortunately, some of them are flown, you know, there, and so you end up getting cases that have nothing to do with my office. You know, they were flown there by one of our hospitals or by our rescue squads, and I don't even know that this happened. I don't even know the patient, I don't even know they died, and they become a Cuyahoga County case. But unfortunately for Lorraine County, since we don't have a trauma center, and we don't have tertiary care facilities like Rainbows and things of that nature, there's a number of our people in Lorraine County that are flown to Cleveland or transferred to Cleveland and then die in Cleveland, and then those people are billed back to the county of origin. But that really has nothing to do with my office. I don't send, if, again, if you go back years ago, before I took office, they did, the coroner's office did send people to Cleveland. I don't do that. I will not send anyone to Cuyahoga County that's, you know, dies in our county. I don't think that's right to our people, I don't think it's right to our funeral homes, you know, I don't think it's right to our families to be sending people to Cuyahoga County. So I refuse to do it. So that part of my budget, that's a part that's helped me, you know, get along because I haven't been sending people there.
The professional services, non-direct, that's what you were talking about, that twenty-five thousand?
Correct.
That number's gonna be kind of questionable this year, and that's on our side of the ledger.
Right.
Lots of things have changed over there that have increased the amount of autopsies that they're doing over in Cuyahoga. We talked about that some months ago. But we're more current on the bill. We were pretty well backed up for quite a while on that. The last one we paid was pretty significant, wasn't it? Skibby?
Almost sixty.
And how long of a period of time was that for?
About four years. Yeah, that went back a couple of weeks.
It was quite a bit. So with that being current, I know they're doing, like the doc said, they're sending more, more people to Metro Health, and that's gonna, I think, is gonna increase those, those autopsies over there. Every time I pick up the paper, somebody's being flown to Metro Health.
The other thing that's gonna happen is they're opening a hospital in Avon from the Cleveland Clinic, and that's going to pull people from Western Cuyahoga County into Lorraine County. And so that's also gonna increase our numbers for the coroner's office, because all of a sudden, you're gonna have people that used to go to St. John's or Lakewood or one of those hospitals, they're gonna be pulled into Lorraine County. And so, again, I don't know how it's gonna impact us, but I just warn you ahead of time that I think it's gonna impact us to put a hospital in Avon that's gonna draw from Western Cuyahoga County. We're gonna get more, unfortunately, more, more business for the coroner's office in Lorraine County.
I don't have any more questions. Dr. Williams?
No.
No? Thanks, Doc.
Thank you.
Do you wanna do Sarah Jackson now? I think she just showed up.
Yep, she did. Sarah, if you wanna go over there, I'm gonna read the proclamation from the Commissioners in the matter of expressing our appreciation and best wishes to Sarah Jackson on her retirement from the Golden Acres Lorraine County Nursing Home. Whereas Sarah Jackson announced retirement from her position as LPN effective November 30th, 2014. Whereas Sarah is being recognized for sixteen years of service to Lorraine County, being hired June 23rd, 1998. And whereas Sarah was born in Whitfield, Alabama, youngest of four girls, and moved to Ohio in 1952. And whereas Sarah graduated from nursing school, Practical Nurse School of Alariah in 1969, and worked for Weaver's Healthcare Center for thirty-four and a half years. And whereas all her untiring efforts, dedication, kindness, and near-perfect attendance will be remembered by her fellow workers. Now therefore be it resolved by the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners of Lorraine County, Ohio, that we hereby express appreciation for the faithful, conscientious, and rewarding service given by Sarah Jackson to the Lorraine County and its citizens. We wish Sarah and her family the best of happiness, peace, and good health. Enjoy her eleven grandchildren and two great-grandchildren throughout her retirement, and maybe she continue to read, cook, garden, and quilt, sew, and have fun on the gambling trips. Witness our signatures Lori Kokowski, Ted Kallo, and Tom Williams. Congratulations.
Thanks, Kylie.
Either one of you guys wanna say a few words? You're important.
I'd just like to join in and thank Sarah for all her hard work, many, many a medication she has passed, many, many a shift she has worked when someone else couldn't come in, and she's been a good employee. And the near-perfect attendance is very hard to find after sixteen years. So I appreciate all your efforts, Sarah, and I wish you the best of luck in your retirement.
Thanks, Kylie. Appreciate it.
Just thank you all very much. Thank you kindly. I appreciate it all.
Thank you, Sarah. Sheriff, your turn.
Whichever one you feel more comfortable.
Morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Captain Hammond with me, he runs some personality also. He does dual jobs, though, he wears many hats. He's also still in charge of the jail, and the jail administrator just left here, Annie Labenthal. I sent you over a letter this morning with some figures from my fiscal people, and I'm sure you probably haven't had a lot of time to digest some of that. But I guess I just wanted to reiterate, obviously, some of the reasons some of the things went up there. And first of all, we know raises are one of them. We have four different bargaining units over there that are in different cycles. Actually, we're negotiating right now with the OPBA, the Ohio Patronants and Association, which includes all the corrections and the maintenance and typists. Obviously, that's the biggest unit that we have over there, and I just anticipated they're gonna get three percent. I don't know if that's exactly, but that's what everybody else got, so obviously, you guys know how it goes, they always ask for more, and we'll see where these fact-finders and conciliators go. And we just finished up with the deputies who got three percent in fourteen, and theirs is a little bit different, as you know, also, for fifteen, they get two-point-seven-five. But it almost all come out to the same as everybody else got. And then you got non-bargaining who are gonna get two and a quarter this year. So that was some of the reasons, obviously, that the salary accounts went up with some of the PRS. Healthcare rates, I know we don't pay it for the general fund, but we do pay it out of the jail tax.
Can we do the sheriff's, your budget first, and we'll get to the jail?
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
Let's do one...
The general fund?
Yeah, the general fund, Sheriff, if we can.
Okay, that's fine. Like I say, I gave you a fact sheet, I think, on the last one that the fiscal people did, and you can see some of the reasons why things did go up. Obviously, the pay raises was one of them. The grant that we had for three years, it's actually gonna run out in February of fifteen. So those two deputy salaries that we're gonna have to pick up off the general fund that were paid by the federal grant prior to that. So that's gonna be ending. Once again, the increase is that I said, the two-point-seven-five for all the deputies.
Now, two replacement deputies underneath that, Sheriff? We got guys retiring and you're replacing? Is that what the two replacement deputies are, that line item?
Actually, that, yes, that is correct. Two guys that are retiring that are coming back. Not coming back, but two hires, just replace, I'm not adding any people, but I'm replacing people as they leave, obviously.
That's what I understood, I just wanted to say it since we're talking about it.
Yes. And as you're well aware of, there's four additional deputies added, and then with three intermittents, which comes out to roughly about three-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars, which is, you know, increases that general fund amount too.
Where's it showing that on the budget request?
It's on this, what we got this morning.
Yeah, it's under that probation security.
No, I think I left it on my desk.
Right here. Sheriff, when do those two deputies retire? Wouldn't that necessarily be in the budget already if they were retiring? Wasn't it in last year's budget?
Yeah, it's in fourteens, but this is fifteens I'm talking about now.
It said there was grant money that's running out in February.
Replacement deputies, that's...
Talking about two replacement deputies, if they were already figured in the fourteen, wouldn't that be already, that would be in the fourteen budget? It wouldn't be a new expenditure.
That's correct.
I really, I really can't answer that question right now, until I research a little bit more.
If you're replacing them, the money's already there, isn't it? In order to warrant a hundred thousand dollars, it'd have to be new.
Right.
Okay. I will recheck on that for you.
That was a question I was asking for the replacing, I didn't quite get that far, so...
Okay, sorry.
Guess I should've brought the fiscal people with me.
Well, I'm sure you got it at nine o'clock this morning like we did, right, Sheriff?
Yeah.
We've got that number for the grant ending that we wrote over.
Yeah, the grant, we understood, because we committed to that federal grant sometime ago.
I will check on administrator and get back for sure.
Thank you.
And hopefully that, if that drops off, that makes it much cheaper, obviously. One thing I did wanna bring up too is the vehicles. Obviously, you know, you bought us eight last year. I sent a letter over too to the county administrator. I know he hasn't had time to probably read that one yet either with his thousands of emails that he gets. But the replacement cost for six more vehicles would be about a hundred-and-seventy-nine thousand dollars. I did not include that into these figures, but I just at least wanted to bring that up to you.
We did eight last year general fund, and two you did over leftover money you had, correct? And we get a total of ten last year, though?
Yes.
Okay, all right, that's what I thought.
And how many are you anticipating needing in 2015?
Six.
Six?
And like I say, I sent that letter over, so obviously, if you get a chance to look at that. That's from Captain Drazdowski, my vehicle maintenance coordinator, wrote that up.
Sheriff, do you wanna go to the jail now by any chance? You wanna do that next?
Yeah.
Hammond, whoever's in, Sheriff. Go ahead.
And obviously, that's one up to twelve million, seven-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand, three-hundred-and-forty-five dollars. And we're projected to spend this year, I think I had that amount on there.
Adding personnel?
No, we're not adding any personnel, but we've been down actually in the jail because obviously, as people leave, and it takes a while to do a background. I can tell you, it probably takes us two months to do a really good background in any new employees. So obviously, you got a lag there, no salary there. We're actually down five right now.
But you're showing a difference of ninety thousand dollars in salary and forty-eight and seven in law enforcement from 2014 to 15.
Which line are you on there, Commissioner?
Are we not using this anymore?
Actually, I think we're working off the sheriff's letter on page two, towards the bottom, it says jail and jail law enforcement. Lori, do you have his?
No, I have what I had, got from Lisa yesterday.
Do you have another one of those, Lisa? Do you even have to give up yours?
Now, Sheriff, again, question being on the five replacement correction officers, are those replacing retired people, that the number would already be in the budget?
We just haven't achieved that level, we just can't get it out of the game.
But it's still already in the budget, so it's not an increase. Yeah, thanks.
Actually, it probably wasn't in the budget, probably what they did was maybe like ninety-three, but we gotta add five. We gotta get back to ninety-eight. We haven't been able to do that for the whole year, I can tell you that. And we anticipate, we're gonna have a few more people retiring probably by the end of this year.
But if they're retiring and you're just replacing them, the salary in PRS would be in the account less the raises, that's the question.
What fiscal is saying is while it was there, we didn't spend it.
You wanna get in the microphone, Jack? Jack, you wanna get in the microphone with the sheriff if you're explaining so they can get your...
What the fiscal staff is saying, they're using a bad term as replacement, that while that was in the budget, we've, we never achieved ninety-eight in the year 2014, because as we're hiring, people are retiring.
Can you give us your average staffing levels for the last year? That'll show...
We touched ninety-seven one time for a brief moment, and then we retirees and two people left, so we're back down to ninety-three correction officers right now. So while that money's there, we haven't actually spent it, that's why you're gonna see the difference in the budget. While it was allocated, we just never got those people on board to spend that money.
So it's already allocated?
Technically. But they're just, they're trying to point that out to make sure that when we hit ninety-eight, it's gonna look like we're spending more than we actually...
Jack, five corrections officers shouldn't cost a million dollars.
Right.
I think what you need to look though, County Minister, look at the fourteen expense, and then look at the difference in the new request. That's the difference. It's not a million, it's, I don't know why they have a million there, I think they're doing the total amount.
Right, that's what we're wrong.
But you're right, it's about four-hundred thousand or something.
Yeah, okay, all right. That sounds, you know, a lot better for that, the way they have it crafted here.
I understand what you're saying there.
That's our confusion why we're asking that, Sheriff. I mean, it says a million bucks for five guys, I wanna be a corrections officer.
Yeah.
That's those Hammond.
They're not making that kind of money.
They got about four-hundred-and-fifty for five corrections officers, and even that is, is pretty, pretty high. I think an all-in on a corrections officer, we're probably about sixty thousand with Bennys and so forth. The, but we take a look at that.
Okay.
We'll talk about it. I'll give Jack a call.
Okay.
And a lot of that comes, I mean, that's levy funded, then the supplement, the other part from the general fund. So I mean, that's a, just the numbers were kind of staggering this morning, I get this on my desk at nine o'clock, I'm, a million dollars for five corrections officers, you know, it just...
And I don't know if they're just looking at the total difference, yeah, I don't, yeah, you're right.
Well, they didn't do that up above, though. You know what I'm saying? There's no...
Okay. I should've, I know I should've brought them. But, and also, my office manager works out of records, we were paying him out of the carry and concealed weapons account, which is, you know, loud under the law. That funding, they have told me, is depleted, so now we gotta move him back over onto the jail monies.
We're not doing near as many concealed carries anymore?
We're still doing them, but they, they just, it draws down. What it is, it'll build back up, and then next year, we probably can put him back on it. Because we did that with the prior sergeant, we had her on it, and then we had to take her off, and then put it back as the fund gets depleted, and then it builds back up again. So we're, I'm projecting next year, we'll probably be able to put that person back onto that. And then, just a projected, three percent increases for all the correctional people. Could be less. I doubt it.
What's that, Sheriff?
I said, could be less, but I doubt it, because that's what everybody else got, you know how that goes.
I actually would not anticipate less than the pattern of three percent. The, and of course, with the rank separation differential, one contract pushes all the contracts, and we've done that for what, twenty years?
County Minister is correct on that, because as you move up, the sixty percent rank differential comes into play.
The, you know, pretty much the pattern was maintained. The only difference in these contracts was that they achieved a quarter percent difference through the whole life of the contract. And the board didn't think it was cost-effective to try to take that to remediation and conciliation, so it was pretty close to the pattern, and I wouldn't anticipate that breaking at all.
And Sheriff, we're gonna have to get some clarification on these numbers.
Okay. Yep, we'll do that when we get back, and I'll send you over another sheet then.
Can you run it like what we've had in the past with the breakdown like this, with these new numbers for us?
Okay. Lisa, you'll convert it then when it comes over, so we're up per line item, so we have it properly. All right, thank you.
So other than the security over at the two locations increases, are you asking for additional increases above and beyond that for general fund employees?
No, just with the raises.
But not, no additional?
No additional officers, nope. Yeah, well, the healthcare, they pay.
You know, Commissioners, when you have three million dollars in payroll, it doesn't, it doesn't take long for raises to really...
Oh, yeah.
Push the budget up. I think your basic, biggest expense is the payroll, and so it pushes real hard on that. The, and I'm also gonna assume that we're going to handle the vehicles like we did the last time, we still got the open capital.
Correct.
And I will tell you that I've been in conversation with, with Jack about needs at the jail with regard to depleted assets that we really need to take a look at before they cost us a lot more money. So I'll be speaking to you with regard to that. While that bomb was open, you know, I spoke to him and said, "Look, we need, we need to get that roof fixed," or whatever. There's a few things, you got some showers that are bad out there that...
Yeah, I get that.
Right. So I'll be giving you a call, we'll get down that list, but there's gonna be some, some capital repairs that are necessary.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Okay, thank you, Commissioners.
Mr. Louvy?
Who's talking? You or you?
Well, I will speak sometimes, and I'm sure the judge will take over eventually.
He could stop that.
I'm the detail guy, and he's the policy guy, so depending on what your questions are, hopefully, we can give you the answers you're looking for. You should've received from us our 2015 budget. It is six-point-nine million dollars. I know based on your previous discussions with other groups, you're mostly, and I'm prepared to go over whatever line items you wanna discuss, but you typically have asked questions about salaries. There's one or two new people in, we have two general fund accounts basically, or actually three. You have the general group, you have probation, and you have jury commissioners. And there's a couple of new people in the general fund budget, there's three or four new probation officers in the probation one, no changes to the jury commissioners. The only other changes in, on that line item are a two-and-a-quarter percent raise for the employees. So that's, that's how...
My guess would be salary employees, the new IJIS guy that would be out of the...
Yep.
Does he have an assistant also?
He does not, no. And then, with respect to the probation people, that's mostly a factor of the grants have been stagnant with the state for a number of years. We've had additional need over there. One of the problems we sometimes run into, quite frankly, is as healthcare, the grants are bid years ago, so healthcare costs have gone up, the funds that are available for grant funds for that person no longer cover some of those expenses, and so then we have to move them into general fund to cover those costs.
Question, Tim, how many adult probation officers are there? Now, is that combined with the PSI also?
Correct. There is thirty-eight total probation officers.
With the new hires?
Including the new hires, correct.
That's PSI and adult probation?
Correct.
What's the breakdown? How many PSI now today? So we had six or seven when we started, right? Is it up to eight now?
I think it's eight.
Eight according to seven, it must be.
I mean, just to give you the sense of the change, I mean, when I started as a court administrator back in '08, I think we had less than a dozen probation officers, and now we're at thirty-eight. So that, that's a department that has substantially increased. And it's reflective of the state's philosophy, they wanna put less dollars in the prisons, and as a result, it's their thought, and I think there's probably some accuracy behind it, that those dollars that you deal with these people locally, and they're less likely to recidivate. So that's the philosophy at least.
Yeah. Now, Tim, I would say that if you guys sentence individuals to prison, if you go over a certain quota, you can actually lose money from the state.
Absolutely. We get, you know, millions of dollars right now in grants, and that's a struggle for the judges right now, and Judge Baleski can speak to it more, but they tell us, and Beth gets reports from the state every month, that, hey, if you sentence too many guys to prison, then we're gonna cut your dollars back. And so that's, it's an interesting dilemma for the judges, because it impacts on their ability. The public doesn't understand that. They say, "Why didn't you send all these guys to prison?" Well, that, they have to weigh those decisions.
Yeah, to speak to that issue, there's actually been a sort of a two-fold push in that regard from the state. The first was the legislature made some modifications of the sentencing laws to make it more difficult for judges to send individuals with low-level felony crimes, F4s and F5s, to prison. Then they also, that's the language, but there's also just been a push from the state of Ohio with regard to our budgeting process. For example, the budgeting for the grants that we receive, we receive those from the Ohio Department of Rehabilitation and Corrections, and that's a part of their budget. And so, at the same time that the legislature's telling us to send less people to prison, the DRC is providing us some additional funding to try to satisfy that. But it's all conditioned upon us being successful in that regard. And so even if I don't send somebody to prison, if I just send somebody to jail because they've been violating community control, it's considered an unsuccessful termination, that has an impact on us. And if we have too many unsuccessful terminations, that has an impact on our grant funding. So it's not only the legislator's philosophy of reducing prison populations, but it's also the effort of the DRC to sort of implement that by putting additional pressures on, on us in that regard. It's, it's always been, for us, the easy decision is always to send somebody to prison because you can never have ramifications from that in the community. It's just the opposite now. And as a result, our probation officers, I think generally their caseload, when I assumed the bench in ninety-nine, somewhere between sixty to seventy cases per employee. Now it's probably thirty or forty percent higher than that for each of them. And as a result of the push with regard to keeping people out of prison, they're also dealing with individuals who are not as easy to deal with as, as it was when I first started on the bench. More hardened criminals. We've reduced the population in the, in prisons of non-violent criminals, but those numbers are still kind of flat because we're sending more violent prisoners or criminals to, to prison. But we are essentially giving our probation officers harder people to deal with than what they've had in the past. And of course, we're also giving them more. And then the last aspect is the DRC decided to get out of the business, at least in Lorain County, on, on writing pre-sentence investigation reports. So that eight employees that we have in the old Columbia Gas building, that, we had never done that job until a couple of years ago. That's a job that the state had done for us. They gave us grant funding in order to accomplish that, but that limits, not, the number one, the number of employees. And, but it's, it's an additional burden that the courts have had to assume and therefore an additional concern regarding budgeting.
And nobody can go to prison without going through PSI, correct?
No, nobody can get a community control without a PSI. And so that, yeah, but for a lot of individuals, especially if they're out on bond, they want that month to wait for their PSI even though they feel that they're gonna go to prison because that gives them a month to spend time with family or whatever they're planning on. So, but essentially, I don't need a PSI to send somebody to prison.
Need a PSI for a community control.
Keep them in community control. That's correct.
Tim, you, you speak to the grants. Could you, just for edification, could you tell us how much we get in grants from the state?
Yep.
They don't have to be exact. I mean, just rough.
Okay. And they're all broken down by, so I don't have a conglomeration number, but let's go through a couple. We get for, and I'm gonna give you, I can give you two numbers. Do you want the definitive ones from 2013 or you want the more rougher ones from 2014 because we haven't concluded? Do you have a preference?
No, it doesn't matter. I, I just think that for the, you know, the public that may be looking in...
In 2013, we got for the, for the ISP felony grants, we got five hundred and eighty thousand there. For misdemeanors, we got a hundred and sixteen thousand there. For PSI, we had three hundred thousand there. For the non-support, we got sixty thousand. For the jail grant, we got fifty-five thousand. For the electronic monitoring, we had twenty thousand.
I guess the question is now, if you just went through and you sentenced everyone to prison and you were losing some of those grant dollars, what's the cost comparison?
Well, that's where I was going.
Right.
Which, which grants would be in jeopardy?
All of them. Yeah, they, they've tied those grant funds to outcomes. And it's kinda like, which I guess you probably experienced over the years with the airport. They start giving you dollars and the strings get larger and larger and tighter and tighter. And so if you don't jump through all the hoops they want you to jump through, then they can pull all of your grant funds.
So you got about a million one in grants? Just rough, I mean, rough.
Probably.
Be considerate to the DRC, though. Understand that that's part of the reason why they've expanded their grant funding is they want us to use the CBCF instead of sending somebody to prison. They want us to use inpatient drug treatment instead of sending somebody to prison. And so they've also provided us funding for certain programming, Thinking for a Change, the CATS program. There's a number of other programs that we are implementing regularly because that is their push to make sure that the people we put on supervision remain on supervision rather than get incarcerated.
Ask the question in the room. What if you just put them all in prison? I may as well ask it. I mean, it's standing out here. Let's ask the question.
You couldn't even statutorily do that. Some of them are not, yeah, even if you wanted to, you're right. We could. And I've kind of had that argument in an intellectual conversation with the judges. You, you can't even, on the F4 and F5s, you can't put them in prison.
Yeah, that, that was one of the fights when that legislation was adopted, September of thirteen, was the judicial conference and a number of judges, the ones who love their power, were really, were really concerned about the taking of our power to be able to make that discretionary decision in that regard. That, that comment, put them all in prison, is something my wife says to me every Monday before I go into work because Monday's my criminal day. It's our little joke. It's, as I said, it's always been easier to send somebody to prison because you never get repercussions. I mean, a family's unhappy. I don't, I'm gonna discount that, but it, it's a lot harder now to send somebody to prison. And both statutorily and also with what they're pushing out of Columbus is essentially they want us to stop sending as many people to prison. And we like to be good partners because we get grant funding. The better partner we are with the state of Ohio, the more grant funding we get.
And there's a reality, too. I mean, there's a reason why the state wants to save their own dollars, but there's a lot of data that says we send these guys to prison, they become better prisoners or better criminals. And so quite frankly, locally, we would have some concerns about this guy that we just now sent down to prison. He comes back, he's gonna come back locally, more than likely, and he's now a better criminal. So not ideal from our perspective.
The, the only thing I see on here, major concern, is the three point two million for the building repair.
Essentially, that, that represents, Commissioners, the, the exact number from the reports we sent you back in October. That consists of two point seven million dollars for the remodeling of the old courthouse, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for remediation of asbestos mold and lead paint, and three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for repairs to the exterior.
Okay. Now, do you, I know you have a fund that you could use, as we talked about in the, moving it over to the fifth floor of the courthouse. Would we be able to use any of those dollars to offset this if we were gonna spend the three point two million or...
Commissioner, respectfully, not for the old courthouse. The judges have discussed this at length and I'll let Judge Baleski opine on that further. But ultimately, hopefully, you can appreciate and respect that the courts, the court has fiscal obligations and fiduciary obligations with respect to those funds. And we do not believe that that is a good use of the court funds. We, we've put to the Commissioners our proposal regarding a good use of court funds and we would be happy to partner with you in that respect. But with respect to the courthouse, that is the Commissioners' decision to put us there and ultimately, you're responsible then for those costs.
So if it did go to the fifth floor of the courthouse, that number could come down to nine hundred thousand.
That's correct.
Okay.
And, and, you know, just to speak to that issue that, that Timmy talks about, because quite honestly, the, our duty with regard to how we spend our dollars is essentially no different than your duty in that regard. We have a responsibility to make sure that our dollars are going into an appropriate process that's gonna facilitate the, the best work we can do. There's a number of issues with regard to the old courthouse. You just put it aside, the issues about the, the security issues and the maintenance issues and the health issues for the employees. It's an ineffective building from the standpoint of office work. In order to get, to, if I'm bringing the defendant in, in one of his appointments, I may have to walk through another person's office with that person to go to my office. Because a courthouse is built for a courthouse. It's got wide hallways. It's got big, big rooms for the courtrooms. And then otherwise, it's small offices that are all sort of interwoven and connected. And so one of the issues we see is, is it's not conducive to a good business environment from the standpoint of being able to have private conversations with individuals. Everybody in that building wants to have his private conversations because you have to have some difficult discussions with these individuals. You're trying to persuade people who do not have high school diplomas to go out and get their GED. You're talking about to people who have not had jobs for years and the judge orders them to get a job. And so they're working with them. I, I know that one of the issues was one of the rooms where there was clothing. We have situations where our defendants don't know how to properly dress for a job interview. And so we make available to them, with the assistance of the state grants, we make available to them clothing to assist them in that regard. So part of the issue is, is that the, the building itself is not conducive to a good business environment for probation responsibilities. The other issue is just the, the travel issue. You've got, if I have to meet with one of my probation officers, and I will tell you, I, I don't know how you, how much information or knowledge you have in that regard, but I meet with probation officers regularly. I can't say daily. On my, Monday is my criminal day and I'll meet four or five probation officers on that day. But throughout the week, if a probation officer is wanting to talk about a case and work with me to come up with a plan, Judge, this is what I'm thinking. What do you think about how we handle this? I'd like to do this. I know the defendant wants to do this. And you have to have those conversations. And, and from the probation officer's perspective, they need to converse with us because, number one, we give them guidance. Maybe we give them the freedom to do something that they'd be concerned about after the fact and they can say, well, the judge said it was okay. I mean, that's part of it. But every time one of those probation officers comes over, there, there's lost time of them traveling back and forth between the two buildings. I think we've talked before about the security issues there. I, I think, quite honestly, that closeness, Mr. Cordez spoke about that when Commissioner Williams, when you suggested that we move to the fifth floor of, of this building. And I think there was a concern because there are employees there that you folks were, deal with and work with on a daily basis and you want them close. That's exactly our position. We work with these probation officers daily. We want them close. We wanna be effective in what we're doing. And so from our perspective, the, the real issue is, is are we not gonna offer it for this or are we gonna offer it for that? The real issue was, because from my personal experience, I don't know when a division or department of this county has ever offered to make seventy percent, cover the seventy percent of the costs of improvements. I think we, that nine hundred thousand, I think our budget is somewhere around two point four million for the expansion on the fifth floor. And so we're talking about an, an offer. I don't think it's ever been done before because we believe it makes our job better and it makes the county safer. And so because the other building has so many deficiencies from the standpoint of effectiveness, security, health, you name it, we think it's worthwhile to the courts to offer something that's never been offered before. And that's not taxpayer money. That's our special projects funds that we're able to assess as court costs. And so our, our position is essentially by allowing us to go into the fifth floor, we would save the taxpayer around two million dollars or more, depending on the, the final numbers. The other issue is, in, in that regard, that I think needs to be appreciated, is we're not... I know that from the very start of this, of this new building, the Justice Center, there was always a desire by the Commissioners, your predecessors, to save space for modifications, for expansions. What we're seeing, and I think you folks talked about it a week or so ago with regard to the issue of foreclosures. And I can't recall distinctly what the subject matter was, but there was some recognition, I thought, by the Commissioners that the foreclosure caseloads are going down. And that's actually a great sign, obviously, for the county. That's consistent on just about every area of work the judges are doing. The judges are, have lower caseloads now than they have had probably since...
Two thousand and six, two thousand and seven.
Two thousand and six, two thousand and seven. On the other hand, our probation officers' caseloads are expanding because of the push by the state in that regard. And so the only place we're really expanding, and we foresee expansion in the distant future, is with regard to supervising defendants as opposed to expanding caseloads. Our expansion plans will still save space for at least two courtrooms on the fifth floor. So they'll still be available to the Commissioners at some time in the future. If there's a need to expand the courts or expand other offices, it'll be available. And so it's, to us, we think it's a win-win because it reduces our security costs and your security costs. We bring our people in and so that they are one floor away from us or two floors, in my situation, away from us rather than across the street or down the street or further down the street. And, and so that's why we made that offer. I think that was back in August. To, it was not in this meeting. It was to Ms. Kokoski and, and Mr. Williams when we were meeting and looking at the fifth floor.
Yeah, actually, I think that offer actually even goes back further because Judge Burge and then Judge Maraldi at the time had, I had conversations with them about it. I think that was back in May. So...
Yeah.
I, I think it's a fair offer. You know my position. I, I support that move into the fifth floor of the Justice Center.
Our, our philosophy, and, and I appreciate that it may be perceived now as a, as a political battle or whatever. I, I've always been the type of person that, you know, I send people to prison for life. I voted on deciding whether somebody should get the death penalty or not. I've got a lot of power. I really don't need to spend any of my moments and my breaths on power struggles with you three folks. I really don't. Maybe my predecessors felt otherwise. I don't know. All I can tell you is, is that that's not my mindset. My mindset is I wanna be effective in what we do. My probation officers are the ones who make me successful. It's not me. I make a decision. If I give them community control, those probation officers are responsible for establishing that I was correct. And, and so to me, I gotta do everything in my power to let them do their job well. And oh, by the way, it helps us in the county. It helps Phil Stomity with his budget because it reduces his jail population. It has so many positive down-the-road effects that, that's why we push this hard. And I regret that it's, it's perceived by some or many as, as a political battle, as a power struggle or whatever. My sense of it is, if it was a power struggle, we wouldn't be offering you two million dollars to make it work for us. We'd be saying, do it and do it today, that kind of thing. So...
Well, my only comment in regards to that, because we've got our ongoing things, is anything that gets built out by the county would be bonded. We don't pay it for cash anymore. This is into year two thousand and putting twenty-five million dollar on a new justice center. So I mean, that's not it.
I agree with you. That was, that was...
I didn't expect that to come across on the budget when I got it yesterday. I gotta be honest.
Our dilemma is, and I, and I appreciate that, the problem is, from our perspective, we're obligated to present you with a budget that we believe is reasonable and necessary, and we have. Now, how you fund that is completely within your discretion. But, I mean, based on...
You're not ordering the budget this, this time?
We absolutely are. The judges will be ordering the budget, yes, absolutely. But this is the methodology by which we proceed.
So you are saying ultimately, you will give us this money and we will spend it on what we see deemed necessary?
What, what I, what we said back in, I think, August or July, and I was at that meeting as well, although more of an observer because I was not the administrative judge at that time. But we indicated that since you folks saw, and I'm not sure whether, how solid those numbers were, but since you saw the potential move to the building on Broad Street to be around a cost to the county of about nine hundred thousand dollars, we said, listen, if that's what you're willing to spend, spend it to, to improve the efficiency. We will pay the rest. And, and that's always been our position. I will tell you that I get some debates at our meetings now because we just are in the process of spending a hundred and forty thousand dollars of our special projects funds to satisfy the security issues at those two buildings. So sometimes there's concern that over time, I'd have some difficulty having everybody agree that, well, if this is something that's reasonable and appropriate and it's less expensive, why not do it? Why do we have to pay more than our fair share or whatever you wanna call it? And, and so we're still of that mindset, though, to resolve this. Because I will tell you, we are now in a, we find as judges with regard to resolving cases, the time before, right before everybody spends a lot of money is the time when the, that's when you gotta get it settled. And we're about to hit that in our case. And I don't wanna talk at length about it, but the fact of the matter is, we all know, we got evidentiary requirements by about the middle of December, briefing schedules. We're gonna be spending hundreds of thousands of dollars of taxpayer money on litigation expenses with three people I've known for a number of years, maybe a little less with Mr. Williams. But I don't recall ever having a bad conversation with any of the three of you. And maybe I'm a little different than my predecessor. I don't know. That's up to you folks to decide in that regard. But the fact of the matter is, the judges, and me in particular, feel a great obligation to our employees, particularly in the probation department. I think it's the third most dangerous job in Lorain County, behind corrections officers and sheriff's deputies. Because they're dealing with felons on a daily basis. They're walking through crowded lobbies, maybe arresting somebody whose friend is sitting in a seat right next to him. So they don't know whether somebody's gonna come up behind him and grab that gun to make sure that they get that person over to the sheriff's office. gun to make sure that they get that person over to the sheriff's office for incarceration. We're dealing with more violent criminals now in the probation department. And so it's never going to, it's never going to be a power struggle between us and you folks and me. As long as my, I do my best to give my best for my employees, we're all going to be on the same page. And I think the sooner we do that, the less money we'll spend.
Yeah. You know, the other option was the fifth floor, just removing people around from the fifth floor down to other vacant areas. I think the county could probably get away with about $350,000 with total renovations on that.
Problem being with securing this building, I'll tell you when you brought that up, because we have so many entrance and exits. I mean, there's all, take your pick and get in here.
Yeah, but you could, you could secure it in the fifth floor. That's where the area is needed on that. So you could go through and do the security on the fifth floor.
Are you talking about the administration building?
Yes, yeah.
I mean, we're, at the end of the day, it is within the commissioner's discretion to locate the probation department within a reasonable place for the court. And that is your province. You still run into logistical issues and inefficiencies regardless of anywhere outside of, in the same facility, but that is your problem.
Yeah, and I agree with you with the inefficiencies as far as the time that it takes to go from this building to the next building. You know, stopping your work, going across, talking to somebody that stops you on another issue and then coming back. What should normally take 10 minutes is probably going to take you a half hour. And that's even in the private sector, people run that, run into that issue when they go from building to building. So I understand the inefficiencies with...
And then, and if you multiply it, I, I will tell you that, you know, by the, when we were talking about the fifth floor in this building, we had not yet received that assessment from the Supreme Court, is my recollection. And it's clear now that the Supreme Court's position is, if you have court proceedings or court employees in the building, it's considered a court facility. And I, and I think there were some, I, quite honestly, from my perspective as head of the Security Committee at the, at the Justice Center, I've always felt that that was an ultimate conclusion by them, but I think it was debatable maybe in other people's minds. And so that will create an additional issue with regard to the fifth floor in this building. It will create the same issue that we have now in the two buildings where our probation department employees are. It will be a problem still on Broad Street if that's still on the, on the, on the radar of the commissioners in that regard. One advantage of our debate so far is, we bought you folks some security equipment. And we bought it for us, I guess. But the fact of the matter is, wherever we go, that will be able to be utilized. And so the sheriff said, hey, if we end up moving into the Justice Center, that's going to assist because we'll have more security equipment to be able to, to handle what we see as an increased flow of individuals. But I will tell you that, and I had a conversation with Captain Drazdowski last week about this, I think that the sheriff would see some significant security issues in, in this building. Something that he'll be able to address, maybe you restrict access to the fifth floor only through certain processes. You've got elevator issues getting up to the fifth floor and stuff like that, and how do you have, do you have one elevator that's only available to the fifth floor and everything? I'm not sure that the movement of our elevators in this building is sufficiently fast that we are willing to give up an elevator.
I don't think, Judge General, I don't think, the fifth floor up here was just tossed out. I don't think that would have any, you know, actuality. I'm still behind you guys. I know my stance is keeping the grand old dame open and using it to the best of its ability versus shutting it down. And I think through video conferencing and stuff, you can still accomplish most of what you need to do with, because you do that from the jail now, I'm assuming.
Well, we, we do it only because it's, it's, we have that available in one courtroom. And that would be the, the visiting courtroom on the fourth floor. And we've found some difficulties in that regard in that the equipments, the technology in that room is not as good as the equipment in the, in the probate court, which had been revamped some years ago.
Some of our equipment in here, it's all a decade-plus euro. A lot of this stuff has to be updated. That's a capital expenditure that has to be done anyways.
Well, and there's some logistics, other problems, because sometimes the officer actually has to be present for the hearings. And so that, that can't happen over Skype or over video conference. They've got to be there because they're going to testify. So, I mean, that's just a problem we deal with now.
Yeah. If we have probation violation hearings, they have to be, and we, we're trying to work through that, but you know, the criminal caseload has a sort of, it's got the Constitution. Every time you come up with a solution to make things either cheaper or more efficient or whatever, then all of a sudden, somebody talks about constitutional rights and stuff like that. And, and so that's, that's always recognized. You know, you, you made a comment, Mr. Kalo, and, and there's a significant part of me that, that agrees completely with you, that, you know, my first job as a judge was in that building. All my work as a lawyer since '87 was in that building. That's where my father worked. I know our bar association wants to revamp that. I know the mayor of Valeria looked at that and she got a budget proposal of 13 million to bring it back to its former glory. I know that Mr. Williams, I think, had had a Realtor go through and talked about five to 10. Our proposal was just to make it conducive to a continuing safe and healthy environment and effective for offices. But I, I think the commissioners have to be cognizant of the fact that a building built in '87 or whatever the year is, '87, '88, is going to have increased maintenance costs that you just don't have at the Justice Center. And so as, as Mr. Looby said, we've got to go where you tell us to go. We really don't have any discretion in that regard. All we are able to do is make sure that it's reasonable and appropriate for the services we have to provide. And we believe that the Justice Center takes that and then some, and that's why we're willing to pay for that. The others, that has to be a business decision by the commissioners, I think, to decide to put their money into a building that's 125 years old, which is also the symbol of the justice system in Lorraine County and has been for over 100 years.
Okay. Tim, I just want to make sure. It's 3.2 here?
Yep.
And that's the number for the old courthouse?
Correct.
So it would go down to 900,000 if it was agreed upon to move it to the fifth floor of the Justice Center?
It would.
Okay. All right.
Yes, it would. And if you have any questions about whether the judges will honor that, don't question it. We have, we're the ones who are supposed to enforce the laws in Lorraine County, and you can rest assured that if we promise you we'll pay for everything but that 900,000, no matter what the cost is. If it escalates on us because our estimates are, they're a couple of years old now.
Sure.
It may escalate on us. There's no escalation clause in your 900,000.
And you're actually using fees that you collect in order to pay for it?
Two, two sources of fees. One would be the probation services. These are the fees that the individuals that are on probation pay. The other one is, it allowed me to tap into foreclosure funds because we were going to move the foreclosure department up to that fifth floor. Now, we still have issues that haven't been addressed. I mean, if we don't deal with something like this in a wholehearted approach, we're going to be back sometime early next year. It just hasn't been practical to talk about it, but we've got to address the current foreclosure department, where they're at. They are occupying space that really should be for a visiting judge and for administration, and it's just not ideal. But that's a battle for a different day. But it's something that, that gets taken care of in totality if we consider the fifth floor build-out.
Yeah, and if I recall, 3.2 million for the renovation of the old courthouse is only for two floors.
Correct.
Two of the four floors.
Yeah, mothballs. This, and, and I hope the commissioners do appreciate this, because we've talked about the courthouse and perhaps saving it for posterity and stuff like that. This guts any posterity. The, the shell outside is still the same, but this makes it a truly, as functional as we can for office-based uses. So there will be no opportunity to ever return this structure to its historical basis. And so I just hope that is always considered.
The, the plans include a mothballing of the basement and the third floor.
Yep.
And so, you know, the, the bar association and Judge Swigley, I know, Swigley, I know, has been a big fan of retaining and improving that building, and I appreciate that. Like myself, he spent a lot of time working in that building. We're not trying to force on you in this budget some opportunity for us to do a grand plan. It's cost-effective, we believe, and we believe it's efficient and effective. So you tell us where to go. Well, that's a pretty broad opportunity here. You tell us where we're going to go. And it doesn't matter how I say it. It's, yeah. So, any questions?
No, thank you. I don't have any.
Well, this was a new line item that's been added just for this sole purpose, and I just have a concern of whether the judges need to have a building maintenance line item if you're even able to. But, and I want to reserve a lot of what I would like to say only because we are in litigation. I see you have a court reporter here that's probably going, you're going to use for your litigation, so I don't want to incriminate myself.
Now, Ms. Kokoski, I will tell you that the court reporter was, we understood that they were, you folks were not recording the, the program, and so that was a significant portion of it. At least, somebody suggested to us at the budget hearings last week that they are not being recorded.
Because we did a commissioners' meeting on Wednesday. Today, we combined them all.
We're doing our meeting today also.
It'll all be on TV, Judge.
And, and, and so, yeah, and then there's also a, a little paranoia maybe by the bench. I will tell you that being paranoid is okay if everybody's after you. All I can tell you is, is that you and I have had a conversation within the last few weeks. You had concern about trying to consolidate the two probation departments into one building. I, shortly after that, I asked Ms. Swelena to give us an idea of what it would take, and there were some improvements that would be necessary on the second floor to get that done. Captain Drazdowski talked about some changes that would have to be done on the first floor to make that front entrance more secure because the volume would be up, and it's really, since it is being recorded, I'll just say it's not the way Captain Drazdowski would like it to be. The difficulty is, if we do that, if we consolidate without a future plan of going elsewhere, then the difficulty is, we're going to have a whole bunch of more employees in there who have to be moved around in order to modify the offices to make them more efficient and more effective. And so, quite honestly, from our perspective, putting us into the fifth floor of the Justice Center would significantly speed up and improve the chances of consolidating these two, reducing the sheriff's budget in that regard. I'm glad he's not in the room because he might get angry at me. He's still, oh, he is still here. Sorry, Phil. But that would be the, the subject that we talked about, about trying to consolidate can work a lot better with us coming into the Justice Center because then we wouldn't have to work around an extra nine employees in that regard and those other changes. But the fact of the matter is, is that from our perspective, I think the judges feel that this matter is going to get resolved shortly. Maybe not in December, but probably some time. My main concern is, is that if we don't come to a, a resolution that where both sides are, are happy or at least satisfied, whatever issues we have now, they're going to be repeated again six months down the road. We're going to be concerned about maintenance issues that are not being addressed. That's part of the reason why we added that thousand, $50,000 into the budget for maintenance, is because the maintenance department is smaller now in Lorraine County than it was five or six years ago. And, and I would suggest to you that our philosophy, feeling is that more work is being done in the older buildings than is being done in ours. There are a number of issues. Judge Burge's jury room has a leaking roof that's been leaking for years.
We have multiple offices.
Multiple, multiple problems that have not been fully addressed. And so with all veracity, it's a frustration level from our standpoint in that regard. And I'm not necessarily being critical of the commissioners or Ms. Davis, who, who runs that department, because you own a lot of buildings.
Well, to be fair to Ms. Davis, too, she's catching up on a lot of work that was...
And she is doing that in our, in the courthouse, no question.
As you're aware, there was a lot of work that was neglected, probably because of some politics being played, but she is doing an effective job. Just want people to know, she, she's working on it to get it done, but she's got about eight years of stuff that she has to catch up on.
And, and we've seen that, haven't we, Mr. Looby? We've seen improvements in the...
We've seen improvement. I, I will be candid and say there's room for improvements. One of my biggest frustrations is, and I, and Karen does a, a much better job, is, look, we understand that she's not, either through her authority or even the commissioner's ability to pay, able to take care of all of the needs at once. One of the, the problems we still struggle with is, we put in three, four, five, six maintenance requests and never get a response. I, I can handle, we're not going to do it, we're going to get to it, here's when we're going to address it, but I have maintenance requests that are two years old, carpet in the jury assembly room, actually, three years old. I had a conversation with Dennis Schaber, who communicated with Commissioner Kalo, and we were going to get that fixed three years ago. Then when Karen came over, we were going to fix that as well, and it's still, three years later, unaddressed. So in my mind, that's, that's something that, that does increase our frustration.
Any more questions? Thank you, Judge. Happy Thanksgiving, guys.
Thank you, folks. Appreciate your time.
Are we?
A little bit, without that.
Good morning, Paul.
Good morning, commissioners.
Tell us about the Board of Elections.
Well, I will tell you, I wasn't anticipating coming over. We were not looking to increase anything with our budget for this year, and I was notified by Teresa that, that I didn't have to come over. But certain events have, have pushed me to come over and speak before you today. I believe Teresa should have given you a sheet concerning...
Got it.
So I guess the first thing that I'd like to do before I start is to mention that in Lorraine County, we have over 1,000 poll workers that on Election Day do an incredible job. And just over the last couple of days, we kind of determined exactly what is the error rate that we're looking at. And in this case, we're looking at well less than 1%. In this particular election, less than three tenths of a percent is what we're looking at in terms of a potential error rate. But obviously, in our business, we want to make sure every vote counts, and the problem that we run into is, is that if those, that small percentage of those votes that have an error happen to occur in the same place, that becomes a much bigger problem in that particular area. So first, I wanted to kind of explain just how the system works currently so that I can explain then how this new piece of equipment would address that problem. The sheet before you shows, the first box shows what the poll workers see when they open the signature roster. So when they open the signature roster, they see the voter's name, and then it shows what precinct they are. And below that, you'll notice there's a black box with white letters, or white letters and white numbers. That is the determination of what particular split it is in a particular precinct. So if you have a precinct where there's two different school districts, that will let the poll workers know which split that that is. The next sheet below that is what the poll workers complete. So they'll see, okay, this particular one says 1110-1. That's North Ridgeville 1B. They're going to then check the box, actually, we have them initial the box, so we know who did this, in that white area on the picture just below the signature page. That allows the person who is encoding the ballot to know what type of ballot to encode. What then happens is, is you see there's an encoder there at the bottom of that page. They actually will take one of these, which is a small calculator, and they will pick whichever button. So if that particular split happens to be Split 2, they're going to push the Split 2 button, put the card in, and encode it. This prob, this, this system, like I said, for the most part, our poll workers do a wonderful job of handling this, and they have done that for a number of years. However, the deficiencies in this fall under, in particular, breaks and lunches. When those people who have been doing it all day and who have been specifically trained on encoding ballots or looking up the signature rosters and filling out these forms, when they go to lunch or they take a break during their 15-hour day, people who then take over, they might not necessarily do it in the same manner, or in some cases, they don't do it correctly. So that person comes back, who is the experienced person, comes back and they notice the errors. But at that point, as it mentions in the sheet, you can't go back and fix that. Once the voters have come in and have voted, it can't be fixed. The only way it can possibly be fixed is if the voter happens to realize, oh, wait a second. I noticed that I'm supposed to be voting on a particular issue, Ward Council or a particular school district issue. If they don't see that on their ballot, they can inform the poll workers, and a large number of these problems are addressed that way. They will inform the poll workers, the poll workers will then re-encode their card, they will see the error and fix it. But if the voter does not do that, then, or they come to the poll worker after the fact that they can't, they already cast their ballot, that, that's another problem we run into. Voters will see, I think I have an error, then they inform the poll workers after the fact. Well, at that point, the poll workers cannot confirm for sure whether or not there was one because the ballot's already been cast. At that point, there's nothing they can do about it. The other issue here is, is that we're always going to deal with a particular rate of human error. So, you know, encoding this, making sure that you hit the right button, making sure that the person who is looking at the signature roster checks the right box, all those things lead to the potential for human error. lead to the potential for human error. And, over the years, we've tried to find ways to, to address this issue, because I, I never wanted to stand here, like I am today, and make you feel as though, "Well, the Board of Elections found a problem, so now we just want to throw money at the problem that's going to solve the issue." That's not the case. For the last about four and a half years, myself and Deputy Director and other people on staff have been looking at ways of, how do we address this issue? What exactly do we do? One of the people here today is Mark Radke from ESNS, and he will tell you that a little over four years ago, myself and the Deputy Director sat down with him at one of the election conferences and talked about express poll books. But at that time, we thought, you know, there's a number of things we want to do first, before we go to that. And, he had sent us some information at that time, but, like I said, over the last four years, we haven't had a lot of communication with him on that issue, because we wanted to try to address problems without having to spend money and get the express poll books. So, what are the things that we've done? Well, one of the things that we've done is we've divided their duties, and we have specifically had classes to go over particular duties, to specialize their training. Poll workers go through a three-hour training class, and now they are specialized. Before, three or four years ago, they would come in and they would learn everything. And then we would say, "Okay, these people will serve as presiding judges, or these people will serve as other officers, but you're going to learn everything." Now, it's very specialized training. We figured that way we can get the people who are actually going to do the job into a room, we can go over it and over it and over it with them. Beyond that, we've reduced the size of the classes, and we've also added assessments. So, starting about two and a half years ago, we were one of the first counties in the state to begin testing poll workers. Poll workers take anywhere from a 20 to 25-question test at the end of their poll worker training session, and if they don't have a B average or higher, they don't work. In the last couple of elections, we went a step further. Beyond having them do the assessment, we decided, well, they're going to do a hands-on test. So, we have aides in class, they will set up tables, they will follow through the whole voting procedure, and if they don't pass the skills test, then they fail the, the class as well, to add that additional level of training for the poll workers. Beyond that, one of the things that we, we worked on with our state association, and now has become state law, is creating poll worker supervisors. We call them voting location managers, who oversee the operation of all of our polling locations. Particular issues with encoding ballots becomes a major issue in places, the bigger they get. The bigger they get, the higher probability for error that there is. So, having people who are managers and who are skilled people serving in those capacities to oversee the operation has also helped this issue. So, why have we got to the point to where we believe the express poll system is really, at this point, our final option? And, a lot of that has to do with what I've already talked about before, human error. This, this system will help eliminate the human error, because in the electronic poll book system, what's going to happen is, the voter will come in, it's on a tablet, the information will be brought up, and the tablet itself will encode the ballot for them. So, this will no longer exist. All that will have, all that will be there for the poll workers will be a tablet, they will look up the voter's name, information, they will be able to then just pop the card in, it'll encode the ballot, it will be programmed to the correct precinct or correct split. The system that we're looking at, currently, there are a number of poll book, electronic poll books that, that are out there, a large number of them. Unfortunately, for us, because we have ballot access cards, which were originally developed by the Diebold system, the other options for poll books that other companies offer, they do not offer the ability to encode the card. And, we believe that if we're going to have electronic poll books in order to solve this problem, it has to be able to program the voter access card. Beyond that, it continues to leave room for human error, which we believe needs to be totally eliminated. The other good thing about this particular system that we're looking at, it is compatible with future election equipment. So, if we are looking at some point over the next X number of years to get future election equipment, it's not going to be a case of, "Well, this isn't compatible with the, the new equipment." This is, this is equipment that will be compatible with future equipment. And actually, the equipment that we are looking at is significantly cheaper than what was offered just a few years ago. The equipment that we're looking at is almost brand-new. There are 14 counties that currently have the express poll books. One of them has the current version that we're looking at. The safeguards to the system are, first off, there's an 18-hour battery backup for the system, so we can ensure that even if the power goes out, that we can maintain the processing of voters, and we've already looked at some other counties of what are their contingency plans in case the thing dies. I deal with computers all the time, and that occasionally happens, the thing just shuts down. How do we handle that? And we're already looking into contingency plans in case that happened. Now, I'm going to get to the point that you're probably most interested in, which is the cost. So, the first thing I want to mention is the cost savings that can be generated from this. I estimate that we can get as far as seventeen thousand dollars per year in cost savings in order to offset the cost of this implementation. For the most part, that's going to deal with elimination of poll worker positions, and elimination of training and supplies for those workers. Also, a smaller piece of this is the printed signature rosters that we currently have. The printed signature rosters will no longer be needed, at least in their current form. Those, all of those items will add up to cost savings. So, the cost that, the price that we're looking at is a lease purchase option, which has been presented to us by our vendor, which would, for 2015, the cost is eighty-eight thousand, two hundred, thirteen dollars, seventy-two cents. We take off the seventeen thousand dollars of cost savings, which I believe that we will be able to accomplish, and that would remain, that would end up with seventy-one thousand, two hundred, thirteen dollars and seventy-two cents. Over those remaining four years of that, that lease purchase option, we would be looking at just under seventy, seventy thousand dollars. Then in 2020 and beyond, there would be the thirty-one thousand dollar licensing fee that would continue for that equipment.
How many years was the seventy thousand dollars for, Paul?
The, well, the seventy-one is for, for next year, and then six, well, almost seventy for sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen.
So, it's really a permanent increase of seventy thousand dollars in the budget.
Yes.
Because by the time we get to the maintenance contract, we're probably going to need something else, so...
Correct.
The Board of Elections wasn't scheduled to come in, you know, I work with Paul a lot on stuff, and they do a good job controlling costs. But you had said that anybody that was asking for additional funds, you wanted to see here, so that's why we scheduled up pretty quick. There's another issue I want to go into, though. We also have had discussion about obsolescence of our current equipment, and when that may occur. And I don't think, you indicated to me we have too many years left.
That's correct. The County Commissioners Association had that conference call earlier last month, and I did send myself and the Deputy Director put something together to send to the Commissioners. I would imagine that we're looking at some point in the next two to, maybe as far out as five or six years, but at some point, relatively soon, a full replacement of our, of our voting system. And, at this point, there are a large number of counties that are under the same situation. Some of them, I know just recently, Guernsey County, they, they paid to just totally purchase a new system and, and go to a new system. Other counties, I think, are looking whether or not there's going to be any state or federal funding to, to assist with that. I know the Secretary of State's office has looked into that. Whether or that, whether or not that ever comes to, into fruition, I have no idea.
Those were HAVA, HAVA funds?
HAVA funds, yeah.
The, the, and we received a few million dollars, didn't we?
That's correct. The, the current voting system was entirely paid with HAVA funds. Correct.
And that, the cost at that time, you, just vaguely, you know, roughly...
I believe, well, Mark Radke, do you remember, was that about 3.5 million?
I don't recall.
I, I believe it was somewhere between 3.5 and 4.5 million.
We had to pay maintenance on that, though.
Well, you still are paying maintenance on that.
Correct. And it's increasing.
I would suggest that, even, even though technology is decreasing costs, it's probably going to be a similar cost within the next two to, two, four years to start replacing our current system. I just want to keep that in the back of your mind. We hear a lot of stuff, you, you hear a lot of costs this morning, and you can see that the future is, is not as brightly lit as people seem to think it is, because there's a small increase in sales tax. The, the, the books that you're going to purchase, when, how long would it take to get those?
It would be my expectation we would be able to implement them by the primary election.
I don't have any questions in regards to that, I know things we've got to be fixed, constantly updating. Thanks, Paul.
Okay.
Good to see you, Paul.
Thanks.
All right. Madam Clerk, we can go into our Board of Commissioners meeting now?
Sure. Under resolutions, number one, investments.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Mr. Kalo.
Aye.
Ms. Kocowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Corporations.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kalo.
Aye.
Ms. Kocowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kalo.
Aye.
Ms. Kocowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Bills.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kalo.
Aye.
Ms. Kocowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Under the Commissioners, authorized various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdiction Lorraine County Commissioners.
Mr. Cordes?
Thank you, Commissioner. I do have several personnel issues I'd like to talk to you about, potential hires and community development, job and family services, two that quickly come to mind. I also want to have discussion on ongoing litigation, and the potential sale or purchase of real estate. All three topical, topics are allowable under the Sunshine Act for executive session, discussion, so I'd ask at the conclusion of our regular board meeting today, we go into executive session, we talk about those issues that I've specified. Thank you.
Approved and waived the reading of the minutes of November 18th and 19th.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kalo.
Aye.
Ms. Kocowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Authorized salary adjustments for Larry Municipal Court effective January 1st, 2015, which reflects the county's 2/5 share for Judge Gary Bennett, Presiding Administrative Judge, by weekly rate of nine hundred and seventy-three dollars and eight cents, and Judge Lisa Lockgraze, by weekly rate of nine hundred and fifty.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kalo.
Aye.
Ms. Kocowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Under the transit approved and entered agreement with City of Oberlin to provide transportation services effective January 2nd through December 30th, 2015, Oberlin will provide twenty-two dollars and twenty-seven, seven cents per hour to be used by LCT as match to support the service, plus a fifty-dollar monthly fee to cover administrative expenses, no general fund monies used.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner, for just a second, you know, the 2227, we say it's match, but for people that do come in, that, we're matching FTA dollars, so, in effect, we're, we're getting 100% return from the federal government on Oberlin's investment in transit. I really wish other communities would take a strong look at, and try to help us out with that, specifically in some of the more urbanized areas. We're missing out a lot of federal dollars because of lack of local resources. Now, I'm not one to assume too many things, but after all the dreadful news I've heard in the last two weeks of budget hearings, I'm pretty certain I'm not going to be seeing any additional dollars from the county for transit. So, I'm grateful for Oberlin's participation, and just wish that we could impress other people that when spending a little money brings us a lot of money. And, and the money for maintenance is 80% money, so it's even better. So, just wanted to point that out. Thanks.
Thank you.
Under the engineer, approved and entered LPA agreement with ODOT to administrative design, qualification of bidders, construction, inspection of the project, and establish the responsibilities for the local administration of the project for the resurfacing of Oberlin Mileri Road from Butternut Ridge to State Route 511, Carlisle, New Russia Townships. Authorized engineer to execute on documents on behalf of Board of Prosecutors, approved as a form.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kalo.
Aye.
Ms. Kocowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Award contract to Erie Blacktop Sandusky in the amount of 785,886 dollars and 50 cents for the Butternut Ridge resurfacing project, Carlisle Township. Eight bids were received on November 19th, this being the most responsive complying with specifications, and will be paid 80% federal and 20% OPWC in MBGT account. Issue notice to proceed letter effective April 1st, 2015, and conclude by June 26th, 2015. Authorized County Administrator to notify the auditor to release retainage at completion. There will be no substitutions, but Erie Blacktop will be using American Roadway, Boca and Buckeye Batumis as subcontractors.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kalo.
Aye.
Ms. Kocowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Under the sheriff, advertised notice to bidders for the food service at the jail, notice being the chronic on November 28th and December 5th. Walk-through will be December 8th, and open at 2:00 PM on December 9th.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
It was December 29th.
December 29th?
Yeah.
Did I say 9?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Sorry.
It's okay.
Ms. Kocowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Cordes?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I, like Judge Boletsky, did not think we were being recorded today, so, lack of a jacket is my excuse. The, I thought we would cancel the board meeting, and we were just going to have budget hearings and do a little bit of board business today without being televised. I want to point out for the board, and I didn't have a chance to talk with Commissioner Williams before the meeting, but we're, the board was a little contrite with, with the presentation by Common Police Court, because we are in litigation, and you were, I talked to both of you, and I, and I didn't get, I said, didn't get a chance, Commissioner Williams, too much more, but I think he understands that what we say here is, in open forum, has great, could have great effect on that litigation. And I want the, the public to misconstrue your silence on some of those budget issues to mean that you don't have concerns, and that because you didn't respond with your own arguments, that you didn't feel strongly about your positions on those things. And I think it's important that I say that for you. The, as you know, they, they didn't think we would be televised, and they did bring a court reporter for that very specific reason. So while, you know, we're hearing very gentle talk, I don't think we're in a gentle environment. And, and I know everybody has their idea of what's best for this, this particular issue. I think you have a right for the public to know why you didn't present your own positions more fully, if that's okay. I just say that.
Yep. My tongue's a little sore from biting on it.
Yeah.
But, I'm good.
Yep. I did forget to ask, though, where our security report is, though. They left before I asked that question. I understand that, and I will find out why we haven't been granted a copy. The, the court did issue that order last week, that we are, the Supreme Court, that we are to be provided the copy without, without limitations. It's already been reported on, we had several, several court rulings that went our way last week, and, and of course, we're preparing for...
Briefs and all, as the judge pointed out.
Right. Okay. So, we really have to remain silent as that process unfolds. I don't have anything else to, to report this morning. Thank you.
Mr. Ennis?
I do have just one brief update on imminent litigation.
Commissioners report.
Not much to report on. This past Friday, Commissioner Kalo and I attended a Team Lorraine County Board Retreat at the college. Just talked about Team Lorraine County's vision for the future. It was a lot of good dialogue from the board members, and I'm glad I had an opportunity to do that.